I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shil, can you call a roll, please?
Yes, Mary Ann Bond?
Here.
Tom Yakitis?
Here.
John Ott?
Here.
Mike Hammond?
Here.
Mike Baum?
Here.
Mildred McNeil James?
Here.
And Joe Yen?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 4th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and second, please call a roll.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakitis?
Epstein.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a public comment period. If you'd like to make a comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium, state your name, and sign in. Otherwise, if it's on tonight's agenda, please wait until that item is called before the commission. Moving on, six items for Planning and Zoning Commission action, PZC 2025-018, 420 North Main, LLC variance.
Okay. Yeah, the village has received a petition from 420 North Main LLC to allow a loading facility in the corner side yard. Typically, loading facilities are not allowed on street-facing sides of buildings. The current zoning of the property is M1, so it is an industrially zoned property. However, the comprehensive plan shows the parcel as downtown or mixed use. The current surrounding land uses include residential on both the east and south sides, so directly across the street. The new loading facility would allow the petitioner to accommodate a tenant that would be operating out of a portion of the existing building. They are proposing eight different loading bays. Now, according to the comprehensive plan, the purpose of the downtown mixed land use designation is to provide an exciting mix of uses, including retail, restaurants, and entertainment, professional offices, gathering spaces, institutions, and public facilities, and multifamily residential units. That said, the property is currently zoned M1, and so off-street loading facilities are typically permitted in that district. So the only difference here is simply that it's on the street-facing side. There are typically triggers for additional landscaping and screening for these kinds of facilities if they're within proximity to certain things. This loading facility does not actually hit those triggers, so the only landscaping that's required is our typical parking lot perimeter landscaping. So there is no fence requirement, there are no evergreens, no berming, no buffer yard, or anything like that. Otherwise, the loading facility meets the requirements of the UDO. Yeah, typically, and in the past, we've seen buffer yards be required. The reason that it is not in this case is because the property, the adjacent properties that are residential have a right-of-way in between, and because of that right-of-way, it's not triggered. We recommend making approval of the final landscape plan a condition of approval. There is not currently any outdoor lighting that has been proposed, but if they ever do decide to add lighting, they will have to have their plans approved. Because there is residential across the street, there will be slightly higher standards for the luminosity that's actually reaching those properties. Alright, so should the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the variance from Section 10.9? The following conditions may well be applied. The variations shall expire if the parking lot is redesigned or the property redeveloped, or excuse me, this is a carryover. Approval of final engineering plans, approval of final landscape plan, approval of final photometric plan, final approval by the fire district, and adoption of the finding of facts contained in this report. Staff has also reached out to the petitioner about hours of operation. We haven't received a response, but the petitioner is here so they could answer that for you. Otherwise, we would have probably drafted a requirement that trucks only be operating within those hours of operation, whatever the commission feels appropriate. Since we do have residences nearby, trucks backing up is obviously not the most pleasant thing to be hearing. And so then, staff feels that some constraint could be appropriate. And that's here for your consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, I should note, I'm sorry, we did receive one objection from a neighbor who is not in attendance tonight, citing noise and the difficulty of having residences adjacent to industrial uses.
Okay, at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing in consideration of a variation from Section 10.09 of the UDO to allow off-street loading facility in the corner side yard. If you'd like to make a comment on this issue, please step up to the podium, state your name, and sign in, please.
Sign on the sheet, or?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sign the sheet, please.
If anybody wants to go while I'm filling?
Sir, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
And your name is?
Prashant Nair.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I own the property right across the street from the proposed building, 313 and 315 North Main Street. The concern, I object, I'm expressing my concerns here. Two reasons. One, there is a, you know, it's a school right across the street, and the school bus goes right through the street where we are proposing the docking station, and the school bus stops right at this corner. That's one concern. And second, obviously, the residents over there, the trucks backing up with the noise and the light, you know, coming onto the windows, it's a nuisance and not a pleasant situation to be in. So I'm raising my objections to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Um, go ahead.
So with the school being there, is it a?
Can you step to the mic, please?
With the school being there, plus the, I think there are two school buses coming, one for the high school and for the elementary school. You know, that's the same street, and there's a stop by the corner. Would the village have an opinion on it, or will that be taken into consideration as an objection to this?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So will the village weigh in on those factors? Why would we even consider a docking station with, you know, with the risking, sorry, school children?
So, two things. One is that the village does not have any control over that. The school district has their own policies and things that they can implement there. However, the responsibility of the commission is to consider the potential impacts of this use, and so that is something that can be played into, you know, what they're thinking and discussion today.
Sounds good, thank you.
If there's no further comments from the public on this, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, yeah. And I will go ahead and open up for commissioners and does the petitioner have anything to say on this?
Did you want the PDF that you sent over?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to use the PDF you sent over?
No, I just wanted to say, oh, yeah, but yeah, could you, yeah, do you have it?
Sir, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you. What's your name?
Ruben Espinoza.
Thank you.
So I'm the owner of the property of 420 North Main. I've been owning it for nine years, and it's the largest property, commercial property, in Montgomery. And we're very proud that, you know, since we took over the property, we spent millions of dollars in improvements. The Lyons has been in Montgomery for 125 years, you know? And this is very important for the jobs and the creations of more opportunities for their property. The reason why this request is because the area in the south side, which we are proposing, is completely no loading docks, which affects the possibility of some companies coming into the community and generating more jobs. So the, our operation, that'll be from eight to five, you know, which is normal operations. So it wouldn't be ours, like, it would affect, you know, this is normal operations for a warehouse. This is a son industrial, and I really didn't understand the comment about the school because the school is far further in order, you know, and the entrance for the loading trucks will be out of Mill Road, nothing to affect completely Main Street, which is completely not in discussion. And even in the northern part, you know, where it's in front of the school, it's already loading docks that we're not even moving, you know? This is something additional in the southern part of the property. And as you can see, I don't know how I can.
Just arrows?
Arrows? Yeah. So, yep. So you can see that'll be this entrance from the, from the, actually, south of the property. In the right-hand side, that's Main Street. You know, this is the view, viewing from the south to the north. And this is the entrance coming out of the, out of the south to the north. And this is the view from the, from the east facing to the west, you know? We are really taking in considerations the neighborhood, and that's why we add additional landscaping and trees, you know, facing Main Street in order to, you know, to take care and consideration the Main Street and the beautification of the town, you know? This is in addition, that was whatever was requested from the Village of Montgomery. Any questions, I'm free to answer.
Not at this time, thank you.
Thanks.
Hours.
He said eight AM to five PM?
And will there be, like, will you store the trucks, trailers there, or it's just loading?
No, just loading.
So once they load, they're gone?
No.
Excuse me, can you step to the microphone to answer the questions?
Of course, definitely. Yes, that'll be only loading in and loading in and out, no storage.
Is there only one entrance and one exit?
This is the same entrance and exit from the south. Out of Mill Street.
Hill Street.
There's only one then, it's a combo?
Correct, definite, yes. We're not interfering, there's no core cuts through Main Street. It wouldn't be affected at all. We were already taken consideration. Plus, it wouldn't affect because of the higher, the height.
The height of what? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
I'm sorry?
The height of what?
The height of the elevation in Main Street is a lot higher of the property.
It is higher?
Yes.
Because I was going to ask, is it possible to put a berm along Main Street to build it up?
It's, it's, it's already, it's already higher, already probably three or four feet higher than the property.
Three or four feet higher than?
Yes, I don't know.
Because I know there's kind of a slope there where they're?
Correct, yes.
There's not?
Can you repeat that answer?
Yeah, would you mind stepping up the podium, let me swear you into. You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm John Teberg with Teberg Engineering. So we, we did the site design for this, so we tried to optimize the amount of landscaping in the front and still make sure we can bring the semis in and back them in. So it's, it's, it met the setback ordinance that Sonia and Tony wanted, so we, we actually added more landscaping in the revisions.
I have a question, and you mentioned that landscaping has been improved or elevated. The street that you are talking about is rather bare right now. So do you have some kind of idea how many trees and shrubs? I mean, this is a beautiful picture here. And I, if I read this and I looked at the landscaping, there was quite a few trees. Now, I don't know if that was just for landscaping, or is that actually what you intend to?
Well, we submitted a landscape plan, so the trees are going to be installed at 30-foot centers all the way down Main Street, and in between those trees, we'll be putting in bushes. So we will have a fairly extensive.
Right?
Yes.
And not the parkway?
Correct. There's, the parkway is, is like two feet from the sidewalk to the back of curb, so there's no way to put any additional landscaping there.
So this is on your property, what are you putting on the parkway? Anything at all?
There's no room for anything in the parkway.
Beg your pardon?
There's no room for anything in the parkway?
There is not enough room.
Yeah, the sidewalk is almost up against the curb.
Okay, that is not what I remember. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, and with that, you're going to do, what did you say again, the every? The spacing?
The trees will be going in at 30-foot centers.
30-foot centers.
And, I'm sorry, and previously, I think if I got your question, it was only two trees at all, only two trees.
Right.
There was only two trees, you know, which actually was affecting, it was in danger with the electricity cables, you know? So we're proposing a lot more trees. Instead of two trees, we're adding a lot more trees in Main Street, yes. I thought that was your question, that's what I want to make to clarify.
What's your anticipated volume, like, maybe per hour, trucks coming in and out?
Can you repeat your question, if you don't mind?
Yeah, what's your anticipated volume of trucks per hour?
I don't know, probably, I guess, one truck per hour is so much, you know, it's not, not that much, you know? Yeah, but no, we're not, we're not anticipating a lot, you know? I think what's very important, I'm sorry, is, I mean, what we're proposing really has the beauty, the opportunities, the jobs, you know? And in general, for the community to generate more jobs, you know, you know? And this is along with a company that has been a symbol of Montgomery, of Lyon being here for 125 years. I'm sorry.
Yeah, back to Joe's question, there won't be any trucks parked at night?
No, no trucks at all. The Village of Montgomery forbids truck storage or parking, if I'm not mistaken. No, in and out exclusively. And our operation is eight to five.
Eight to five.
Is this basically just a warehouse, then?
Correct.
Shipping in and out?
Yes, yes, whichever, whatever is allowed right now as an M1 manufactured property.
You mentioned Lyon Metals. Now, is this, Lyon Metals is using this to store their material, or?
Correct.
But are they manufacturing at this?
No, they're not manufacturing. It's only like Lyon Assembly and Distribution.
Thank you.
No problem.
When you say eight to five, is that just Monday through Friday, or are you talking weekends?
Correct, Monday to Friday.
So weekends, you're?
No.
There's a question for the village. Can I be stipulate that not on the weekends, that they can deliver or cannot deliver?
Yeah, no, the eight to five, too. Anything further from commissioners? No, I'll go ahead and look for a motion. Yeah, before we have the motion, please.
Thank you. So what, my question is, what type of trees, because in the winter, when there is no leaves, and it leaves open, are they evergreens or, plus, the, we talked about elevation, but at least from this picture, I don't see a big elevation difference between Main Street and the trucks where they're parked. So they are more or less at the same elevation, at least from this picture, and then from my observation from the, from the Main Street. So I would like to get that clarified. And then also, what type of trees, you know, during winter? And then the opacity, like, what, is it 80% opaque, or, you know, because when the trucks are parked, the lights, even in the daytime, even in winter, when it is dark outside, the lights are straight into the houses across the street. So that will be, you know, again, not a pleasant situation to be in. Thank you.
Okay, so for the landscaping, the trees, none of them are evergreens, they are all shade trees. They are a combination of maples, oaks, tulips, and lindens. In terms of lighting, in terms of building lights, anyway, if they were to have those, they would have to be angled downward so that there was no more than half a foot candle for whatever that means to you at the lot line. So they would have to be that low at the lot line, it would be then even lower by the time it crossed the street. In terms of trucks, we do not have a regulation for headlights.
Yeah, that is my main concern, the truck lights, yeah. And then is it possible to, if we are going ahead with this, is it possible to convert the trees to be evergreens or something that stays on during the winter?
So we can't require it, but, or sorry, we as staff can't require it, it could be made a condition. We cannot replace the shade trees, those are required, so that would require a separate variance. But if you, if it were possible to add evergreens between those trees, it's not, like, there's a ton of root area there, but that could be a possibility.
Or is it possible to build a wall, or, you know, some sort of?
Yeah, fencing is also possible from a zoning standpoint. I would let Mr. Teberg say whether or not he feels it's possible or practical, and then we have our engineer as well.
Sounds good, thank you.
What is, what are your thoughts regarding fencing on this property, at least on the west side there?
It'd be the east side of the property, across the street from the, yeah, that's. I, typically, Tony, we don't put much taller than four or six-foot fence. The headlights on the trucks, they'll actually be angled downward because there's about a 1% slope on the parking lot away from the docks. So everything is draining to the inlets that are in the street, so there is no, I guess there's no way to really block that other than the bushes and the trees. So the bushes are fairly full between the trees. I think we had, what, five or six bushes in between every tree, or maybe more than that? So those type of bushes that we called out for will probably get in the neighborhood of five, six feet tall, which would block the lights. Evergreens, with the landscaping being approximately, I think it's 10 feet is what we have from edge of pavement to the sidewalk, evergreens, it does not take them long before they are 15 to 20 feet in diameter, which would then protrude into the sidewalk and into the parking lot. So I think that was one reason why we felt the trees would be a better alternate with bushes.
My understanding is when the, Mr. Espinoza said the grade was lower in the truck parking than the roadway, is that?
No, he must have been a little confused. It's, it's, everything's sloping away from the building for the drainage. And there is a section in the corner where the property is, is lower, we're actually having to build that up. We have a small retaining wall in the corner because the next door parking lot and entrance is very close. For the most, and the sidewalk's there, it's existing, so we're not changing that grade. So our parking lot and landscaping is coming up flush with the sidewalk.
Okay, that's what, that's what it looks like, so, okay, thank you. One more.
So what are we going to do about the noise pollution? Like, when the trucks back up, you know, the beep sound, you know, it's obviously, we all hear trucks beeping when they, when it, you know, backs up, so that's another concern. Just, what can be done to minimize that?
I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done.
The fencing is one option, though, making it opaque. Restricting hours of operation as well.
Yeah, restricting hours of operation, that's about it. I'm not sure if there's a wall that would block that sound out, anyway. Any more comments, questions for?
I would like to add something along Tom's lines about the hours of operations, eight to five, and only on the weekdays. I don't know when the right time is to make that.
Right now, if you want to make the motion, or?
Yeah, just include it as part of the, as part of the motion. If there's an additional condition that you want to add, just like anything else, you can just add, you know, whatever your motion is, plus the file, you know, the additional condition beyond what's called on the staff report.
The only addition or clarification that I would think might be helpful for the neighbors that live across the street is to try to make sure that the shrubbery that's in between the trees grow to the, you know, tall height, that they're not low shrubs that never get any height to them, so that eventually the neighbors across the way would have an additional kind of light buffer. That's the only thing I can see to add, would be to ensure that the type of shrub has a height to it of five feet or more, something like that. And I'd like to see, add that.
If you want, yeah, I mean, whoever makes the motion can add that as well.
Yeah, I would like to see a motion for that.
So I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a comment before. I guess my feelings are, I just want to get it on record for, to me, being so close to residential, to village hall, and to the shopping and dining areas of Montgomery, I feel this is not a good fit for this property, and I'm voting no.
Still waiting for a motion.
I don't, yeah.
I'll make a motion. I can get to the right page. Thank you. I make a motion to approve PZC. I make a motion to approve PZC 2025-018, 420 North Main Street LLC with the following conditions. Should I list the conditions or...
Yes.
The variations shall expire if the parking lot is redesigned or the property redeveloped with a new structure. Approval of final engineering plans. Approval of final landscape plan. Approval of final photometric plan if additional lighting is proposed. Final approval by the fire district. Adoption of the findings of fact contained in this report. And about hours or... Hours will be eight to five PM and not on the weekends?
I think so.
As well as the issue of the shrub that's in between the trees should be five feet or more.
And that the shrubs between the trees should be five feet apart?
No, height.
Five feet high.
Are you asking about the time of planting or are you...
In terms of growth, yes. Their ultimate growth.
I'll second. So I think the clarification should be made, and just so it's clear that the, with respect to the shrubs...
Right.
The condition is that they...the shrubs that are planted are of such a type and variety that when they come to full maturity and growth, they would be estimated to be five to six feet in height.
Well done.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
That's why we have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll still second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call and roll.
I'll second? Has it been seconded? Okay.
Commissioner Yocitis?
No.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Abstain.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
That item will appear before the village board on Monday, October 13th. So next Monday, 7:00 PM here. Be on the agenda.
That meeting will be discussion. And then there will be a follow-up meeting after that where the boards will actually have a vote. Any objections you have, you will be able to come to that meeting and present them.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is PZC 2025-020, Americo Real Estate Company Special Use. And that has been withdrawn by the petitioner. So we'll move on to the next item. Community development update and new business.
Yeah, so the petition that has...perfect, thank you. The petition that was withdrawn, they do intend to bring it back before the commission. They just decided that they do not want to request the variance and are doing some redesign work to then bring it forward once that's complete. There's also a few project updates. Chipotle has equipment out there, so they should be breaking ground shortly. Staff has received an application for site plan review for a three-tenant building next to Cooper's Hawk that would include a Hawaiian Brothers Restaurant, which I guess has a couple of locations in the city. This would be their first suburban location. We have received preliminary plans for the location... The vacant location that's along 34, that's still standing there right near the gas station. Not north, not the one north of the gas station, the one over where the Popeyes was supposed to be. So hopefully, we will have the full set, plan set to review once that gets submitted. That is not expected to come before the commission unless, for some reason, there's a design hiccup that requires a variance. Otherwise, we have a few other items that could be coming up. There's a development proposal for the corner of Montgomery and Pearl Street that would redevelop the property into multiple housing units. That one is...has been submitted. And so we're just now working out some engineering comments. And once those are done, that'll be coming before you as well. That would be probably a PUD. We have a couple of homes that are intending to petition for rezoning along Baseline Road since that area has gone in a more industrial direction. They would like to rezone their residential properties to residential zoning. So we'll see when they get those applications in. Yeah. So we've got some things happening. The other development opportunities that I've described in the past are all still underway or with the petitioners working on getting their materials ready to apply. Montgomery and Pearl, it's the southeast corner. I believe there's a house there now, but it's...they would be removing that house and then...
Anything from commissioners?
Mildred, you had something, right?
This may be just me, and I meant to bring it up at the very beginning in terms of our minutes that we...that I opened my mouth and made a motion. I'm not understanding, I meant to ask, that it reads, number four reads that there was a motion made by Commissioner Baum to approve the minutes. And then it also says Commissioner Baum seconded the motion. Did we do that that way?
No.
So it was a typo.
It's a typo, I do believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I meant to ask about it when we...before we approved the minutes. But I apologize, I did have a question about that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And I think it's important to clean it up, yeah.
And what are our options there?
Do we know? Can you look back at your notes and see?
I can definitely look back at my notes. I don't have them with me.
Okay. So I think for right now, what we might want to do is revisit that. I mean, we're still in the same meeting that we would have entertained a motion to...
Unapprove the minutes?
To...yeah, well, to not to...
Just amend them or...
To...we're going to be to...
Reconsider.
Recons...yeah, I think that's a great...reconsider the approval of the minutes and then table them to the next meeting to clarify who made the second.
Right. And that is what I'm asking our committee. That I make a motion to do that. And I need a second, I think.
Motion and a second. Call and roll one more time.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Commissioner Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Yocitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Anything else from commissioners here?
It's the first Thursday in November.
So... Next meeting is November 6, 2025. Thank you all.
Thank you.